All right, so hello everyone, this is Paul Cullen, president of Bloomfield Hills School Board. And what we wanted to do today is have an informational meeting about, you know, any potential candidates that we're looking to run for the board. You know, we'll give a little bit of an overview about the roles, you know, we'll do introductions. But we're going to have in this year, there are going to be three potential board seats that are going to be up in November. And what we wanted to do is give as much information out there for individuals who are thinking of running and just to know who you can reach out to if you did have questions because a lot of us, you know, we, two of us, or actually all three of us here recently ran for the board over a year ago. So we're going to be just, you know, any information that people have. So with that, what I want to do is just first go around the room and just kind of introduce who's on the call and how long we've been on the board, a little bit about ourselves. So first, hi, my name is Paul Cullen. I have been on the board, this is going into my sixth year. I have two students that went through the district. One is now a sophomore right now taking, or he finished up his online classes at Duke University. And I have a junior at the high school. That I'll hand it over to Howard.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Hi, my name is Howard Barron. I've been on the school board now for eight years. I ran in 2012 and then again in 2018. I'm a retired financial manager from the auto industry, retired in 2010, and have been doing a huge amount of volunteer work, including being on the school board. So with that, I'll turn that to Jennifer.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Cook. I ran for the board in 2018, so I've been serving for just short of a year and a half. I'm a native of upstate New York, have lived here in Michigan for six years now. I have two kids in the district, a sophomore at IA and a freshman at BHHS.
Pat?
Thanks, Paul. Hi, I'm Pat Watson, superintendent of schools. I've been here now almost five amazing months. Prior to that, I spent the last 26 years in the West Bloomfield School District as a teacher, department head, coach, assistant principal, athletic director, and principal of the high school, originally from Ann Arbor. I have three children. My oldest is a senior at Wayne State. My middle child is a junior at Wisconsin Madison. And then my youngest is a junior and she attends Plymouth Salem High School. Thanks, Paul.
Okay, all right. And Dave, if you could just pop up just our contact details for everyone that's watching live. I know we have some people in the meeting with us. And for the people in meeting with us, if you can just indicate in the chat room, if you have any questions, and I'll just call on you to kind of, you know, go out there and indicate whatever question you have, and then the panel here will be able to answer it. Okay, Dave, with that, what I want to do is, you know, Pat, if you want to just kind of go through just, you know, the board itself, the superintendent team, kind of just, you know, talk a little bit about that, you know, being that you're relatively new. So I think you'd give a good perspective and then me and my colleagues can add commentary to that as well.
Great, thanks, Paul. So if you're watching this, whether replayed or live, now is the absolute best time to be a Board of Education member. You have the opportunity to be on a team of eight. And education is at the point where it's going to be changed forever. So there's a lot of negative things that have happened with COVID-19. But one thing we need to take away is looking at how we go about doing education. How can we make it more experiential? How can we make sure our students are getting the absolute best education that's going to prepare them for whatever they want to do? Whether it's they want to go to college, they want to go into a trade, they want to go straight to a job. So we really need to look at how education needs to change. And so if you're looking to be involved with that, to be, if you're someone that enjoys being on a team and working with a group and really driving positive outcomes, so think of it this way. You look at the district as a whole, you decide to run for the board, you're on the board. So many of our conversations revolve around how can we make it better for kids? Based on our experience, based on experiences we know other students have had nationally, internationally, what can we do to make it the best possible situation for every single person we have? So you talk about doing something that's rewarding, volunteering your time, and really being able to give back to a community, to give back to society. This generation is going to be the generation that's going to take care of us. At least, I hope so. And hopefully, they're also going to pay social security. It's another hope I have that's down the road, but when I was 18, I didn't worry about it. Now I think about it a little bit more. But think about how you can be involved in that. And there's nothing better, in my opinion, than working with students and helping them accomplish their goals and seeing them thrive and go forward in life, and then seeing how they turn out when they're in their 30s. And I have some of my former students that are in 40s that actually live in Bloomfield Hills School District, and they have children, just it's so great to see how far they've come and know that you can have the opportunity to play some part in doing that. Thanks, Paul.
No problem. Howard, Jennifer, I mean, if you guys have, if my colleagues, you guys have comments to add on, you know, just feel free to jump in, otherwise I'll go to the next point. So maybe Jennifer, if you want to talk a little bit about, you know, sort of high-level roles and responsibilities, being relatively probably one of our newest board members.
Sure, and please, everybody who's in the room, feel free to jump in with questions. So traditionally, as it was explained to me, a traditional board, sometimes nicknamed a policy board, has three basic functions: to write and maintain and adhere to the district's policy, also to be the financial steward, so to help craft, maintain, and oversee a budget, hopefully a balanced budget or a surplus, we're very good about that. The third big role is of course to employ, hire, maintain the role of superintendent, who strictly speaking is the only employee of the Board of Education, and the rest of the administration is employed by the superintendent. So that's, that's sort of the traditional model. And, you know, without getting into political philosophy, I think there are different ideas out there about what a, what a board does. And I think, I think Pat said it really, really well. I mean, for me, I really consider myself just a, you know, an active, maybe if you will, a high-level volunteer. A couple, a couple little memes I'll paint for you about, about a Board of Ed is that we are basically responsible for the what. We craft high-level goals for the district, usually on an annual basis. Dictate what we want the district to do, you know, say, a silly example, like we want SAT scores to increase by 10%. So that's a what, and then the superintendent and his administration or hers will then craft and enforce the how that the, that the board has crafted for their what. So that's one little analogy. Another analogy that I really love is that we are kind of the grandparents of the district. So we're not involved with the day-to-day, you know, routine and all that stuff. But we, we are the ones who very much want the district to do very well. And so we are going to be, you know, looking in and giving our care and our attention whenever needed and whenever wanted. Another little analogy that was shared with me early in my board service, and this, this comes from the Michigan Association of School Boards, M A S B. They have a lot of information on the web for prospective candidates. But one little meme that they put out there is that the Board of Education is eyes in and hands out. So sort of like we're kind of standing in a circle around the district, looking, not touching necessarily, but sort of being the overseers of the function of the district.
Very good, thanks, Jennifer. Howard, maybe if you want to talk a little bit about just campaigning and sort of like steps for the candidates to go from, you know, where they are now interested to actually running in November. So if you want to give sort of a high-level overview of that.
Sure. As you've been hearing of the team of eight, there are seven school board members, and then the superintendent, and then the employees who report to the superintendent. The school board members are volunteers. We can run, we have either four-year terms or six-year terms, and that's up to the school board to decide. And our school board has gone back and forth, and right now we have four-year terms. So Paul, Jennifer and I, and another school board member, Lisa Eifros, were elected in 2018. So our terms run through 2022. The three other school board members that are on our board, Mark Bank, Dr. Jackie El-Sayed, and Cynthia Van Ooyen, also have four-year terms, and they were elected in 2016, so they run through 2020. So there are three schools, three seats that are up for election. We have not heard definitively from any of the three whether they will be running or not, but it's very possible that there might be an open seat amongst the three of them, we're not sure yet. So there, so the people who will be running for this school board election will be running as a new candidate. In order to actually run, it's pretty simple. You, the deadline for actually proposing or submitting your name is July 21st. It's about the fourth week of July. It's on a Tuesday. And typically, what you'll have to do is get either 40 signatures or pay $100. Well, right now with COVID, I don't think many people are going to be getting signatures. So most likely, you pay $100, fill a one-page form out, sign your name, get it, note a rise, and you will be on the ballot. So it's pretty simple. This is an elected position. So, and first off, it's nonpartisan, so that we are not D's or we are not R's. There is no primary. All you have to do is fill in this form, pay your $100, and you will be on the ballot. You can have anywhere from, you know, no one actually running, all the way through, you know, 10 or 20 people can run. So there is no limit to the number of people who actually run. It's just purely whoever actually submits their name. If there are, because there are three seats, or it'll be vote for three on the ballot. So if less than three people run or nominate themselves, self-nominate, then it's, it's a no-brainer and you'll be, you know, you'll be elected. If more than three people run, there will be, at that point, an election. In terms of campaigning, you can do absolutely nothing, or you can do a pretty extensive campaign. It's nowhere near as elaborate as you would be for the governor or the president or US House or Senate, or even the state house, state senator, local supervisor, something like that. It's, you know, it's a school board election. So it's not too elaborate, but at the same point, you might want to consider putting out lawn signs or doing some mailers, because most people won't know who Howard Barron is, and especially as a new candidate. So you do want to sort of get your name out there so that people have some idea of who you are and, and what you stand for, what your positions are. So there is going to be, most likely, some campaigning. You know, you go out and you, you know, shake hands and kiss babies. Now, obviously, in COVID-19, you don't do either of those. But you, the only official activity that there is in the campaign is that typically there is a Legal Women Voters Candidate Forum, which is organized by the Legal Women Voters. It is not a debate, but there will be some Q and A, so there'll be some questions, and they'll go around the panel and ask the question. You get a minute, I think, to answer, you have an opening statement, a closing statement, and a minute to answer each question. And they're very likely, the local newspapers will very possibly send you a questionnaire that you fill in, a little, a few essay questions, and they will get published. The Legal Women Voters does that, and I think the Birmingham Bloomfield Eagle, and there's a magazine called Downtown coming out of downtown Birmingham, and they usually do a pretty extensive write-up and possibly your picture in it or something like that. So that's basically what a campaign is. And again, it can be very minimal, or you can be a little bit more substantial, depending upon your choice. Now, in this district, there will be nothing else on the ballot, because this will be in November. So you put your name in in July for the November ballot. There, the, the, the school district will not have, at least at this point, any proposal on the ballot. But just so you know, we do have a proposal on the August ballot of this year, so in a couple months, for a $200 million millage to totally revamp our K through eight buildings. So that potentially could be a discussion point as part of the campaign in terms of whether you're in favor or not in favor of that ballot proposal. So that basically is, oh, and because it's nonpartisan, your name will be at the very bottom of the, of the ballot. So after, because it's nonpartisan, so after the judges. Oh, and just so you know, the, the school district boundaries, there are about 40,000 voters, 5,500 students in Bloomfield Hills Schools. And it runs from the west, I'm sorry, from the east side on Adams Road, which is a little bit of Troy, all the way through Bloomfield Township, the city of Bloomfield Hills, and into West Bloomfield, through Orchard Lake Road. So it goes from Adams to Orchard Lake Road, Square Lake, down to 14 Mile. So that's the geographical area that we are responsible for. I think that about covers it.
Yeah, so if I could just piggyback for a second. So the election is run by Oakland County. So the, the act of filling out the forms and filing to be a candidate is done with Oakland County. They have a great website, a great elections office, the people there are very nice. I probably called them 40 times because I had no idea what I was doing, and Howard helped me a little bit. It's not, it's not very much paperwork, but they, they help you with, with all of the, with the things that need to be done. It's a little confusing because the school district boundaries, as Howard was saying, cross municipalities. So we have, this school district encompasses 12 voting precincts in Bloomfield Township, which is not all of them. We have some precincts in Bloomfield Township that attend Birmingham schools. The two precincts of the city of Bloomfield Hills, one precinct in the city of Troy, that's out by Adams Road, and three precincts in West Bloomfield. So you're, the constituency of voters live in all five of those townships, four of those townships, yet they can all vote for this school election. Whoever is zoned for this school district is who can vote in the election.
I'll add just one more thing to what Jennifer said in terms of the county. So that the, the election office is under the auspices of the county clerk, who's Lisa Brown. And the office is in the 1200 building, if you know where that is, up Telegraph Road, which is where all the county courthouses are and the sheriff's department and things like that. It's a huge complex, and there's one office that's in charge of the elections. And there is one additional requirement that you'll have to do throughout the election. There is some Michigan law for campaign finances. So you will have to set up a bank account and do some reporting on a periodic basis in terms of how much money you raise and how much money you spend. And I'm, and Paul and I are finance guys, so we'd be glad to help anyone out with that. So that there are some, there are, you know, there are some requirements and due dates and deadlines. And if you don't follow those deadlines, there can be some fairly small fines. So Paul and I am sure could, could help anyone out with any of that.
Yeah, and getting to Howard and Jennifer's point, and Jennifer was, was new to running, and so was I. When I first ran, I ran unopposed. And then the second time, I ran in a contested election. So it was my first time around. And so, you know, any one of us or any of our board members would be more than happy to kind of walk you through, because as Jennifer alluded to, and she reached out to Howard, who's, who's done this a couple of times. You know, it's, if you're new to this in terms of running on what you need to do and how do you reach the people while you're, while you're running, there is a process, a mapped-out process, which, you know, I was unaware of, but then once you figure it out, you realize what the steps are. So it's, if, you know, if any of you or anyone out there, you know, wants to reach out to any one of us, we're more than happy to share what that process is. Okay? With that, the next thing I just want to kind of talk about high level is the time commitment. I know people have, have asked that to me in the past about this. So, you know, I'm just kind of going to go through high level. So as board members, the one thing I will say, you know, just talking on behalf of my colleagues, being board president right now, there is an expectation when we have our various meetings, and we do have meetings, they, there are study sessions, board meetings, committee meetings. There's also various district meetings that we attend and training sessions, that my expectation or our expectation as our board is that everyone comes prepared. You know, we have, Pat and his team usually send out a significant amount of information for us to read ahead of time, and the expectation is we're going to read it, we're going to ask questions during our, our study sessions, our meetings. Because again, as Pat says, everything we're doing is in the best interest of students. So the more prepared we are, again, it's, and whether it's attending outside conferences or trying to network with other districts in terms of best practices and reading up, that, that is an expectation for all board members. The other stuff in terms of time commitment, which, you know, we leave it upon, you know, each and every board member to decide. I made a conscious decision years ago, because I moved here 10 years ago from New York, and, you know, I'm relatively new to the area and running, you know, and I ran for the board. I was, you know, I probably didn't know as many of my constituents, residents, families, students as probably some of the other people that were on the board when I was, when I first came on six years ago. So I made a conscious effort that I would go to as many events as possible, which was a great opportunity, A, to get to know our students, A, to get to know the families, and C, get to know what's going on in the district. So in terms of time commitment, it's really up to each and every one of you as, you know, as board members, how much time you want to put into it. I actually, that, that, you know, the, all the other stuff in terms of getting to know our families, students, and then what's going on, I actually love that part. That's, for me, that's the most enjoyable part. You know, then, you know, not that our meetings aren't exciting, but I'm just saying, getting to know, getting to know our families and students. And I've made over the past four or five years, a lot of connections, and I'm good friends with a lot of families out there that I wouldn't have had the opportunity unless I was on the board and I was able to witness these people. And, and our students and everyone on the board, and Pat, you know, who's been here five months realizes, our students accomplish amazing things. I could sit through, I can go to a 10-hour forensics, and I'm, I'm just amazed at what our students and families do. So the time commitment's really up to the individual board members in terms of how much you put in. There's an expectation, then anything above and beyond that. I know the people on this, you know, that are, you know, Howard, Jennifer, and even Pat. I know Pat's, you know, spent the last five months getting to know our families, being in the buildings. I know Howard and Jennifer go to a lot of activities, and that's, that's, that's just the makeup of our board to get to know our families. I'll pause there, and I don't know if there's any questions, or if Jennifer and Howard, if you want to add to that.
Yeah, Paul, let me just add a little bit to that. I've talked to a number of different candidates over the last month or so. As Paul was saying, there is a bare minimum that you do need to spend. So it is not just coming to a meeting occasionally and then leaving. I mean, you do have to do some homework, you do have to go and, and talk to people in the community. I mean, you are an elected official. And there are typically two board meetings a month, sometimes one, and then there is one committee meeting a month. So you can expect to spend, I'd say, you know, 15, 20 hours a month as a minimum in this position. But then, as Paul is saying, you know, there is a whole bunch of optional things on top of that. Paul is incredibly dedicated to going around to all these different events. And if you don't know PK Sports, you will learn PK Sports and all the involvement he has with all the different district activities, whether it's sporting events, co-curricular activities, et cetera. I myself don't do as much of that. I do go to a lot of arts activities. But at the same time, I'm very involved in a lot of legislative issues and education policy at, in Lansing and in Washington DC. And Paul even went down with a trip that Cynthia Van Ooyen and myself typically go in, and Paul went this year down to Washington DC. And we spend a couple of days in a hotel, and then we go to Capitol Hill and lobby Congress, both US House and US Senate, on education issues. Education, you know, so we have our responsibilities within our district, but a lot of the rules come out of, and funding come out of Lansing and of Washington DC. So that's one of the other, not responsibilities, but one of the other things that a school board member can get involved with is a lot of the education policy. You've heard about third-grade reading, you've heard about standardized tests, you've heard about school funding and how COVID is affecting that. All these issues are totally outside of the borders of Adams Road to Orchard Lake. So these are all things that we need to, probably should get involved in in some way. Again, not all school board members need to do it, as long as we have one or two people, that is usually sufficient. So that it really takes a diversity of interests and backgrounds and expertise to be on a school board. Some people are parents, some people are finance people, some people are educators. It really takes that mix to really get a very diverse, and that's diverse in background and also diverse in ethnicity. So you really are looking for a team of eight, as Pat was saying earlier, of different people having different experiences, life experiences, and different involvement in the district to really get a very, very broad and well-functioning school.
Okay. Thanks, Howard. Just, and then the next, next thing I just want to talk about in terms of just that, I know people may have some questions about what, what is a trustee's compensation? And I think we, we indicated it earlier, this is a, this is a volunteer job. So some boards were not, some boards get a stipend, we do not. So, you know, there, there is no compensation for this, it's purely volunteer. You know, to the extent that you're going, like Howard said, if you go to Washington on a, on a PD for board members, you know, you will get reimbursed for that. But, you know, otherwise-
Professional development.
Professional development, you will get reimbursed for that. But otherwise, this is purely a volunteer job. So just to let everyone know that. And then Jennifer, do you want to kind of talk about, you know, a little bit about conflict of interest, you know, conflict of interest and best practices? People may have some questions if they're involved in other organizations, how that works?
Sure, and just to finish up on the previous concept, there are also classes, school board school, well, put on by the Michigan Association of School Boards, and the district does pay for the registration fees. If you're driving to Lansing, you can submit for gasoline, hotel, that, that kind of thing. So yeah, please feel free to jump in here, colleagues. I'm, I'm not the expert on official of interest and best practice policy. There, there is some legislation, there, there are best practices put out by M A S B. I don't, I was not asked to sign an actual conflict of interest statement, but we have board member handbooks and onboarding, and, and the language is, is pretty clear. It's, it's common sense, right? Like, so you, you wouldn't be involved in anything, you can't, you're not going to cross over between your own family's financial interests and your board service, your own family's personal interests and your board service. So like, if my family prints T-shirts and we own that business, we're not going to be soliciting the contract for T-shirts for the senior all-night party. So, you know, that's clearly a conflict of interest, not going to happen. You know, same thing, so some of us are parents with kids in the district. You know, if I want my son to have a robotics class because I want him to have that, I'm not going to be sitting there advocating to create or implement this class because it's good for my children. As a school board member, you have 500, 5,500 children, and, and that is what you are, you are looking at for, for the greater good. So that's kind of all I have to say on the subject. Do you guys have anything to add?
Yeah, I think Jennifer, you hinted a little bit about, you know, the one thing we got to be conscious, especially for parents, is that, you know, we're, you know, we're school board members with 5,500 students. So our particular students, you know, take a back burner, and we got to be careful, you know, about, you know, for a board member, you know, we're, you know, we're obviously, we're looked upon a little bit differently. So, you know, again, you know, whether a conflict of interest goes in a myriad of ways. It's, it's, you know, it's business, it's, it's not using, you know, your title as a board member, you know, in any way. you know, your title as a board member, you know, in any way, you know, for, you know, for your own personal gain and however you take that, you know, you need to take that. So I think that's, you know, that's the spirit of, you know, when we say conflict of interest, you're just not using your position as a board member for any personal gain. And I'll talk a little bit in a second about social media. You know, same same aspect, you know, using your, you know, putting your board hat on versus your individual hat on. I know Howard, did you want to say something?
Yeah. As a school board member, there are seven of us and this is a large organization. This has 5,500 students for 13 years. About 1,000 employees and $100 million worth of expenditures. So this is a large business. That being said, you as a school board member have a lot of responsibility, but you have no authority outside of the meetings. Obviously, you, as as we were, as Jennifer was explaining before, we approve budgets, we hire and fire the superintendent, we evaluate the superintendent. We decide on goals for the district, et cetera, as as seven. But individually, we can't go and say, Superintendent Watson, you do this, or I'm the treasurer. Tina Kostick, you're the CFO, you need to do that. We have absolutely no authority to do that whatsoever. The only authority we have is when we as a board meet as a group of seven and look at an agenda item and make decisions that way. So it is different than a US representative or a a representative in Lansing in that we really don't have any authority to do anything outside of the the organization of the seven of us working together as a team.
Sorry, I was on mute. So just on that, I know just specific questions, you know, on that regarding if, you know, I know we're working on our board operating procedure, you know, people have questions if you're involved in PTOs or PTOCs or heavily involved in one of the organizations in the school, whether or not he can remain on that and and still be on the board. I know in the past that some of my colleagues have been significantly involved. And they have relinquished those positions to be on the board and that's sort of our best practice now. And and right now, our policy team is working on our operating procedures to make a lot of things clear. Including that, some of the things regarding as Howard talked about earlier, campaigning, once you do campaign. So right now our policy team is working on that and the goal is to probably get something out. You know, early August, when, you know, when some of you, you know, will be starting your campaigns. The one thing I want to kind of go into now is, you know, just talking a little bit about social media. So again, and I know we we talked about earlier as a group, you know, when when you're a board member, you have a different viewpoint on things as, you know, as a representative of the district. You know, I personally, I'll just talk about my, you know, there's two realms of social media, there's district social media. Which is either the PTO sites or the district sites and then my own personal accounts, whether it's my Twitter account, my Facebook account. And, you know, I use that obviously for personal, you know, to talk about things going on, you know, and my my family, my personal Facebook. But what I also use it for, because I use it for a means to disseminate information to our community. I do have a significant amount of followers on my Facebook account. I do that purposely so I can make sure that if I'm getting information. And for our community, I could quickly disseminate that, you know, whether it's this event that's going on tonight, I put that on my personal Facebook page. Whether Mr. Watson want, you know, wants to disseminate information, I will take that. Once he sends it out through district channels and put it on my personal Facebook page. My Twitter account, my PK Sports, it's a personal account, but I use that really, you know, 99% of the time is to really recognize all the great achievements going on in our district focused on our students. And that that's the purpose I set that up four or five years ago to do that. And that's what I use that for. So so again, you know, just realize, you know, once you run and if you become on the board, that again, you, you know, you obviously you know, are a board member representing the district, you know, and I'm not saying on your personal account, you can do what you you want in your personal account. But, you know, you just just be wary of of certain things that, you know, now similar to our, you know, everyone who works under Pat, his education team, you know, you're looked upon as a different light. You know, being a representative of the district. So just, you know, just keep that in mind. That's the only other thing I wanted to just, you know, reiterate right now for everyone who's thinking of running. I'll pause there. Jennifer, I know you took yourself off.
So I I do something similar, like I use my Facebook page to disseminate information. You just, you just have to be more circumspect, right? Because anything you say as as a board member could be misconstrued as official board business, right? So I, if I see a heated discussion going on on Facebook, I I tend not to jump in unless I can provide factual information that will help clarify what's going on. So I I do do that. If if there's a situation where I feel like I will want to or need to express my own opinion. I'm very clear about, I am speaking for myself, Jennifer Cook. I am not speaking for the board at this time. And then you you learn to do that if you're in social gatherings or talking to acquaintances when when there's chit chat. You know, your good friends are going to see that distinction, but people you don't know as well may not may not see that distinction. So that just becomes a really helpful prequel to to when you're discussing school matters.
Howard?
Yeah, because that kind of follows on what I was saying earlier, which is you as an individual have no authority to take a position for the organization or send the direction, send any directions to either superintendent or a principal or a teacher or whatever. So there is that balance that you have to keep conscious of between what you say and making sure that it's clear that you're not speaking for the board, you're speaking as an individual. But at the same time, sometimes if the board has made a decision and has taken a position on something. Then you have every right to to say something because you are speaking in a sense for the board. Now, in general, and I'm getting a little deep here because we we have a kind of a rule of thumb that says the president is the spokesman of the organization of the board. But at the same time, if the board has taken a position, you have every right to express that same position and opinion as as a board member, because the board has already decided that.
Thanks, Howard. I know we do have a few people, there's three people at least that are in the meeting and I don't want to put you guys on the spot. I don't know if you wanted to kind of just at least introduce yourselves, tell us a little bit about, you know, your background, you know, maybe one at a time. And then, you know, maybe any specific questions you guys have. So I don't know if that's going to cause some people to leave because they don't want to, they don't want to say anything. But I know we have Silva, is that how you pronounce it?
It's it's Siva Kumar.
Okay.
Hi, Paul.
Hey, how you doing?
Good. So to the members of the board and and Mr. Watson and and, you know, other folks on the phone. I am a parent of two ex-students from the Bloomfield School District. My youngest just graduated from the International Academy the last few weeks and starting college in the fall. I have a son who is who is starting his junior year at college at Michigan. And so so I'm basically, we're empty nesters or going to be empty nesters very soon. So yeah, looking to give back more to the community. I have, I started out as an engineer, I have a graduate degree from Wayne State in engineering. And an MBA from the Ross School of Business. I've been a finance executive, like a couple of you for about 10 years after being an engineer. And then I spent the last 15 years in business roles, working overseas with with joint bunches at my employer. And dealing with a lot of issues over governance and and policymaking. So I'm so I'm just interested in finding out more about remote participation, only because I think I'd mentioned to one of the board members here that there is a possibility that I may travel from time to time. And I believe that recent laws enacted by the governor allow for remote voting. But it's not guaranteed that that short term policy change will continue.
Correct. I mean, just to answer your question, you're right, you know, things have shifted now with everything going on with COVID-19 and everything now, all of our meetings are remote. Kind of ironically, we had one of our board members was traveling and but right before COVID-19, we had virtual meeting where she would zoom in. Which again, was new to us, but then quickly we had a pivot to a whole Zoom, Google meets format. So I think our board is is well aware now on on how to do this and how to make things work remotely in this environment. When we go back, I don't know what the what the new, what the laws are going to say, I I think we'd have to look at it from a policy perspective to answer your question about voting remotely, if we go back to, you know, whatever sense of normalcy was, or we have live meetings. You know, what we would do with that. But, you know, right now, obviously, in our environment, we're all voting remotely. So. Howard, did you want to come off and say anything? Okay.
Yeah. So as Paul was saying, Dr. El Sayed was is commuting between Washington DC and the Detroit area. So we were having her zoom into our meetings. There is certainly nothing against the law to participate or to 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 view the meetings and to be part of the discussion remotely. The only question would be actual voting. Now, I will tell you that the vast majority of our votes are 7-0. Occasionally, we do have some contentious issues that it does, that we go to a 6-1, 5-2, 4-3 vote. But the most of the time, it's going to be a 7-0 vote. So if you're remote, if it's 6-0 instead of 7-0, it really is not that big of a deal. And also if a certain person's vote is critical to make a majority. I I we're a pretty friendly board and I think we would table any of those issues pending the next meeting when the person was able to attend. So I'm sure these kind of things could be worked out. So now, again, it is a time commitment, so you it really would be almost expected to attend the meetings virtually or in person. Obviously, you know, personal events come up and sicknesses and illnesses. So you, there is no requirement to be, you must be in attendance. But we do expect people to, you know, be there, yeah, 80 to 90% of the time. But if you're virtual, I think that definitely can be arranged.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions or?
I also wanted to comment that I'm the president of the homeowners association where I live today. Just as a reference point.
Okay, thank you. We have someone else, I know someone else dropped, we have Renita, I don't know if Renita, if you want to talk? Or say a little bit about yourself, a little bit of background?
Oh, sorry about that, Paul.
That's okay.
Yep. All right, I'm middle of still trying to finish up work here, so I apologize.
No problem, no problem, understood.
Kind of juggle both of them. So I heard my name, I'm like, oh, okay. Hi, my name is Renita James. I live in Bloomfield Township. I have a daughter, she's in third grade, she's over at Eastover. So this would have been her last year. So we've been, of course, transitioning to the remote learning. And I just, of course, at this moment in life, just want to get involved, just to bring about diversity. Bring about a little bit more of a change since now being a parent in the Bloomfield Township. I'm also too as a precinct delegate and precinct number two, and I've been a precinct delegate since, gosh, about 2016. And I run it again. So just trying to, you know, look at education from a different lens. Currently, I work for the state of Michigan. Prior to coming, being in the state of Michigan, I'm I'm an analyst, I've been with the state of Michigan almost 18 years. Prior to this, I was a school teacher, but I was not certified. But I extremely loved every moment of it. And it wasn't until after I left, I said, oh, my God, you know, you you know how you feel like you find your passion, right? But as an analyst, I'm also too, I'm a trainer, so I kind of get the both of two worlds, you know, as I'm working as of right now. So just like I said again, bringing about diversity, bringing about some change, looking at the achievement gap among just all cultures that's within the the community itself. So excited, of course, to join you all and get some information shared. And one of my questions says, I know you said we have to submit our application by July, is there a certain date? That's in July?
It's July 31st, I believe, is the last.
July, July 21st.
July 21st.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I don't know if if Pat, you wanted to say anything else and then, you know, we could close the meeting unless there's any other questions or any of my colleagues have any comments.
Yeah, just those that join, thank you, those watching, we definitely, you know, like I said, it's a great opportunity. It's kind of like a chance to be part of the Wizard of Oz and kind of peek behind the curtain and see what's really going on. I know before I got into administration, I always scratched my head and say, why are these decisions being made? Like, why didn't we do this? Why didn't we do that? Well, what about this? And this gives you the opportunity really to get all the information and say, well, now I kind of get it, that makes sense. I can understand why that decision was made compared to this decision. And it's fun. You know, if you're looking, you know, you're going to be empty nester, or even if you have a young child at home. You're looking to do something that's really going to be fun. This is, in my opinion, something fun you could do to really be involved in. I'd welcome any and all of you and, you know, please sign up, please run. Now, like I said, it's an exciting time, whether it's going for a bond, how education is going to shift and change and just what does it really mean to have a 21st century education, we're 20 years into it, but really, have we really changed? I don't know if we have that much and and now's the time, now's really the time. And we can't go back to where we were before. So I guess that's it. Thanks, Paul.
Yep. And then, you know, just finally, you know, I'll close deteriorating with Pat. I mean, for me, it it's been, it's been just a lot of fun. I don't look at this as a, you know, again, it's a volunteer activity. You know, I I love to get our community, we have an amazing community, we have, you know, so much talent out there. I can, I can go to like 20 events a week and I'm just overly amazed in in again, just, you know, how warm, how friendly, how outgoing our our community is. And when you're in a position to to go out there and just, you know, like I said, just make a difference and get to know this community, this community has been, you know, welcoming. I I think it's it's a great job. I mean, being on the board, you have an opportunity in a high profile district with some, you know, great educators across the district and great families to really make a difference. I would say to anyone out there, you know, this is a one in a lifetime opportunity. And if anyone's thinking of running, I would say you should run because it's, trust me, I've been doing this for six years. And it's well worth it and it's well rewarding, way, you know, I mean, you know, way beyond anything from a compensation element.
And I'll just add to that by saying ditto, you know, I'm a veterinarian, I I don't know, I didn't know the first thing about running or or serving as a school board, but I also received a wonderful, wonderful education myself. So as you look around the world as an adult, it's like, you know, darn, not only do I want to give back, but the way I look at things, a good education is is nipping a lot of other societal problems in the bud, right? So it's kind of the genesis of we are as a society and and really important for the for the health of our democracy. So I I get kind of swoony about it, you know, it's it's for me, it's time, but it's so interesting. I wanted to learn a new thing and and it's it's new, it's different. Try to bring some of my scientific perspective to the board, not always applicable, you know, but it takes, it takes a village, right? So all seven of us who come from different backgrounds, we all can bring our skill sets to education, which is really, really helpful and what it's all about. And I've I've met so many wonderful people. Not just in the community, but the board colleagues, you you end up meeting people from other boards nearby, meeting people at these classes you may go to. So it's been really a very rewarding experience all the way around. So I would just echo if if you're streaming this and and not actually in this meeting, you know, please feel free to reach out to any of us, we're happy to talk to you more about it. We're happy to talk to you more about it and do please consider running.
And let me follow on to what Dr. Cook and Mr. Coleman have said. Bloomfield Hills Schools is one of the premier districts in the state, if not the country. I think all of us want to make it even better. And that's why we've brought Mr. Watson in, because we can get better and we will get better. But we are very good as an organization right now. As Dr. Cook just said though, there are 28 school districts in Oakland County. And there are over 500 school districts in the state of Michigan. So there are about 4,000 school board members in the state of Michigan. So going to some of these events, whether it's a dinner or conferences that we all go to periodically throughout the year in the state of Michigan, you meet a whole bunch of other school board members. And you compare notes and say, yeah, what, what are the issues going on in your district versus our district? How did you resolve this issue or that issue? So there's a lot of learning that you do, not only in classes, but also by talking and networking with other people. Mostly in Michigan, but as I've said earlier and Paul was saying, when we go to Washington DC, there are 1,000 school board members there. So you're able to meet people from California, from Washington, from Maine, from Alaska, and learning how they do education. You know, the United States is a wonderful experiment in that education is really not part of the US Constitution. And it's a responsibility of each state to do it and each district. Because in Michigan in particular, we have local control. So that each district has its own kind of twist and bent on how they do education, how they do school. So there is so much to learn, so much to know. And it's so exciting to get into this whole world. I, I was in the auto industry my career and I got into the auto industry because it was such a complex organization and, and business. But I found in education that it is equally as complex and equally as challenging. So whether it's the, the teaching methods, the way schools are funded or working with the unions or the lawmakers and legislation or buildings and spending $200 million on making 21st century education, it is such an exciting area. And Bloomfield Hills is such a wonderful, wonderful district to be involved with. You're very lucky that you live in this area and we would love to have you as part of our team.
Thanks, Howard. Thanks, everyone, for joining. Thanks, everyone, for live streaming. This will be taped, this is being recorded and this will also be posted. Thank you very much. And I'm going to close the meeting now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for hosting us.
Yep.